We do have a quorum, so we're going to begin. Welcome to the meeting of the Committee for Economic and Community Development. We are here this afternoon for a work session for Bill number 21-0031, Landlord-Tenant Lease Renewals. In attendance, we have Erin Green Middleton Chair, Representative of the 6th District. We also have Councilman John Bullock, Representative of the 9th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Councilman Mark Conway, Representative of the 4th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have Ryan Dorsey, Representative of the 3rd District.
Madam Chair.
We also have Antonio Glover, Representative of the 13th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have Robert Stokes, Representative of the 12th District. I see Robert's name.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And I don't see any other council members, members of, from the Office of the President. I see Nikki Thompson.
Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I see Erin DeGraffery.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Lucy Font.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And representing the Mayor's Office, I see Nina Themulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we begin, you are not, if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you were recognized by the Chair. When you are recognized, please identify yourself and the organization or agency that you are representing. Once you finish speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And let's begin. And again, it's Bill number 21-0031, Landlord-Tenant Lease Renewals. For the purpose of requiring, absent certain good cause circumstances, landlords to offer tenants a reasonable opportunity, renew leases, providing for the manner of notice for which a landlord must send renewal notices or decline to renew notices, establishing a presumption of offer and acceptance, absent certain circumstances, providing for the effect of the subtitle, providing for certain administrative and criminal penalties, and providing for a special effective date. The bill is sponsored by Councilmember Glover. This bill, again, was introduced on January 25, 2021. The Committee heard this bill on April 27, 2021. And this, again, is a work session, so the Committee will not be taking public testimony at today's work session. When we had the hearing, agencies reported on the bill. And we had Hillary Rui from the City Solicitor's Office, which noted the bill unfavorable at that time. We also had Bill Wells, that was representing the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. He's no longer with HABC. I know that he stated he wanted to wait for the amendments before determining the impact of HABC housing. I didn't know if Nina had any, if you have any additional thing to add from the Housing, from, yeah, the Housing Authority?
I don't have anything additional to add. I didn't receive any additional information from the Housing Authority in reference to the amendments, but I'm trying to get some additional information now.
Thank you. We had a, we had Major Sabrina Tab Harper from the Office of the Sheriff, and she presented no objection. And we also had Stephanie Murdock from the Department of Housing and Community Development, which deferred to the Law Department. And I think today, there are some amendments from Housing. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, we had a report from the Department of Finance, which deferred, also deferred to the Law Department. And Mara James was represented at that, at the hearing for that piece. So today, the Committee was given, really should have three sets of amendments that we're going to go over. The council, the amendments from the Council President's Office, the amendments from HCD, which was given early and put in proper form. And not too long ago, we got amendments from Councilmember Ramos, and she's, we're going to have time for her to explain her set of amendments as well. So at this point, we're going to start with the discussion of the amendments, and we'll start with Nikki Thompson and Erin DeGraffery from the Office of the President to start and go over your amendments with the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the members of the Committee. We are here to offer a series of three amendments that do, I'll provide a brief summary of what these amendments do, and then I will turn it over to our General Counsel to provide additional information. So first, we will be making this a temporary measure, so inserting temporarily on page one and line three, and also setting forth a certain determination date, basically aligning this measures with the state of emergency, as we previously discussed in the last hearing. Also, we discussed the current affirmative defense that renters have, that they have a loss of income due to COVID. They have the ability to use that affirmative defense and it not be considered a failure to pay rent. So in Amendment Number Two, on page three, after line 14, we've inserted that a substantial breach does not include failure to pay rent. And then finally, our third amendment is on page five, striking lines 11 through 17. And this is, again, further tailoring this to the state of emergency, that it will automatically expire on the 91st day following of the expiration of the declaration. Oh, my apologies. And then additionally, on Amendment Number Four is also part of, basically Amendment Number Three, on page five and line three, further tailoring its effectiveness to the catastrophic health emergency declared by Governor Hogan on March 5, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Committee at this point on the Council President's Office amendments? Hearing none. I also want to, oh, I'm sorry. It's, oh, Erin, is that you?
Yeah, Conway.
Oh, Councilman Conway, yes, you have the floor.
Sure. I just wanted to ask, I remember there was some question about it being retroactive. Is that something that we figured out in these amendments?
I'll take that question, if that's fine, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Conway, given just as much deliberation as we've had with the Law Department about, you know, what we have the capabilities to do here, the ability to make it retroactive is just pretty much beyond the scope of what we're trying to achieve in this moment. But however, as we continue to kind of work through these issues and maybe look for a more substantive relief after, you know, we've been able to address what we're seeing in the pandemic, that's definitely something we'll be considering.
Okay, great. I would just wanted to make sure, because I remember that was one of the concerns early on, but that's super helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do want to recognize Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Representative of the 14th District and member of the Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So then next, we, I'd like to hear from the Department of Housing and Community Development to offer your amendments, which was, again, put in proper form and efficiency, and you can go over your amendments. Stephanie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison, Liaison for DHCD, here in reporting on landlord-tenant lease renewals. We certainly recognize that many Baltimore renters struggle to pay for housing, leaving their families at risk of instability and even homelessness. We do acknowledge that this bill may provide additional housing stability for Baltimore renters. However, as drafted, it is in conflict with state law. Additionally, this bill provides for enforcement by issuance of an environmental citation, as authorized by City Code Article 1, Subtitle 40, Environmental Control Board. It is unclear if this type of enforcement would be practical or possible by any city employee who is authorized by his or her agency head to issue environmental citations. So DHCD has prepared an amendment to remove enforcement by citation and renumber the section to make it clear that this ordinance does not preclude any other civil or criminal remedy authorized by law. If this bill passes, tenants should have a civil cause of action for addressing instances when landlords fail to offer tenants a reasonable opportunity to renew their lease, but the city should not be involved in issuing citations for lease renewal enforcement. DHCD supports the administration's efforts around tenant protections aimed at promoting housing security, especially during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And I wanted to thank you for your consideration of our amendment. And as stated in our previous bill report, we do defer to the Law Department on the passage of this bill.
Thank, thank you, Stephanie. So since you brought up the Law Department, I see Hillary. Hillary, do you want any comments at this time before we?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hillary Rui for the Law Department. I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Any comments from the Committee at this point? Moving on to the next set of amendments that are going to be explained by Councilmember Ramos, and you should have all received them roughly around 45 minutes to an hour ago. And just to kind of let you know, these amendments, we're, I guess we want to discuss them, and we would like the Law Department to make sure you have a copy as Councilwoman Ramos goes over these amendments. And just to let the Committee know that if we approve these amendments, we, there is time to get them in the formal format for the next council meeting. And on that note, Councilmember Ramos, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Committee members and agencies. If you look at the amendments that the Council President's Office has offered, these are two technical changes that would be added to those amendments. Where it says Amendment Two, where it says, or where it says "failure to pay rent," so the idea behind that amendment was to say that the cause of action or the breach of lease does not include failure to pay rent. We're also adding "or other charges," again, being consistent with understanding that tenants cannot be, they cannot be evicted for other things other than rent. And then the other one is just extending the timeframe from 90 days after the end of the state of emergency to 180 days at the end of the state of emergency, just to give us more time to get the rental assistance out and make sure that residents are stable in their homes as we recover from COVID. Thanks for the opportunity to explain.
Law Department? Comments on these amendments?
No, no comments. The amendments themselves would be legal.
Okay, and you'll approve, and then I guess there'll be, so you do approve them?
Yeah, I have no legal issues with these amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question, Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey, yes?
Thank you. I guess this is kind of a question for both the President's Office and the Law Department, just because it seemed like, I kind of just vaguely recall that some of the governor's orders were things, you know, this shall stay in effect until 90 days after the end of the state of emergency, or anything like that. Does that have no bearing on when other similar provisions would terminate?
Do we have someone that can answer that question?
Mr. Councilman Dorsey, this is Hillary. My understanding is there are still governor's orders that have different timelines that are based on when the emergency ends. So, you know, they are still tracking, you know, when that emergency would be. So if it says 30 days after the emergency, it's still continuing until he ends the state of emergency. Is that making sense?
Yeah, I mean, by the same token, just to be clear, the President's amendment says 90, you know, some of this goes through until the 91st day after. Councilwoman Ramos's version would change that to the 181st day afterward. I mean, there's nothing to stop us from going longer than that if we wanted to, right?
No, there's nothing.
And I'll add, Councilmember, definitely agree with that point, and I think that's why, as Councilmember Ramos stated, this is more of a technical issue and where we fall with how long we're tying it, or how long, how far out we're looking, and it's still a developing issue. So I think we can always add more time, and we probably, as a Committee, can maybe come up with what we think. If a year, you know, I think we can, as a Committee, have the ability to kind of come up with that and see that more as a technical discussion and less of a substantive discussion, because I think we're all in this space of wanting to provide as much time as possible.
My only concern is, is knowing how to respond to anybody who would say, "You shouldn't be doing this." If I can clearly say to them, "We'd have the right to extend this for a year, two years if we felt so inclined, but we chose to go with 180 days, feel lucky." I'm happy to be able to say that to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Good questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Committee? Hearing none. So we have three sets of amendments here, and we can vote on, we're going to vote individually, I would presume, on all three sets. So we'll start, what I'll do is start with the President's amendments, and since Councilwoman Ramos's amendments kind of piggyback on the President's amendments, we'll do her a second, and then we'll add and vote on HCDs. So we'll start with the President's amendments. Do I have a motion to move the President's amendments?
Motion of favorable, favorable motion.
Second, Conway.
Moved by Dorsey, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Stokes, Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Yes? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes? Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
I can't, okay. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Thank you. These, these amendments are approved, going to the second set, which would be Councilwoman Ramos's amendments that will be, basically, address some of the things for the President's amendments. Do I have a motion to move?
So moved. Second, Conway.
So moved by Dorsey, second Conway. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Chair Middleton is a yes. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes?
I have a question. What part amendment are we talking about? Are we talking about the 90 days to the 181 days on Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
So did we, to clarify, I know Councilman Dorsey brought it up. The governor's piece on an extension of 90 days, oh, we got to wait, are we waiting till the COVID is over and we add an additional 90 days from what the governor is offering? That's what it is?
Councilwoman Ramos, you want to answer that?
Yeah, that's, that's what this says, is that, you know, once, if, when the governor ends the state of emergency, which had all of these protections for our renters, those would stop. But in Baltimore, these protections that we're putting in place now will continue for an additional 180 days.
Thank you. My answer is yes.
Thank you. And Councilman Bullock? I didn't. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you. So these, Councilwoman Ramos's amendments were approved, and now we're going to Housing and Community Development amendments. Do I have a motion to move Stephanie Murdock's amendments?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, Conway.
See, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes? Yes, I called myself first on that one. Okay. So now we're, I need a motion to move, yes, Council, yes, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for the Law Department regarding their previous bill report. With these amendments, is the Law Department prepared to approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency?
No, we're not, Mr. Dorsey.
What's the holdup at this point?
The amendments don't change the legal analysis.
Oh, we lost you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Hillary, can you reiterate the legal analysis as to why this is not able to be approved for, it's not a formal problem, it's a legal sufficiency problem?
Right, there's nothing wrong with the form of the bill. It's just that, that these amendments wouldn't change the Law Department's ultimate analysis of it.
And can you reiterate the legal problem, and do you have any suggested manner of remedying the legal problem? And can you also articulate, to some degree, what you believe the ramifications might be of us approving this despite that analysis?
Sure, Councilman. The legal analysis is the same as in our bill report. There's a case on point where the City Council passed a very similar version of this bill, and the courts have struck it down, saying it was basically preempted by state law. And then the other question, what would happen, you know, that's anybody's guess. I mean, obviously, it's the pandemic, and, you know, it's unclear really what a court would do with that, or if a challenge would even be able to be brought in the timeframe that this bill was still essentially on the books. So that kind of remains to be seen.
Are there any, any more questions, Councilman Dorsey?
I have a question.
Councilman Glover?
Yeah, okay, thank you. To the Law, to the Law Department, you said that we had something like this similar in the past, and it was struck down. How long ago was this? Because dealing with this pandemic is something that I have never seen, you know, in my lifetime. So I'm just asking you exactly, how long ago was this, when you said the court struck something like this down, that we put forward to the Council?
Sure, that's a great question, Councilman. Yes, it was not during a pandemic. It was probably 50 years ago.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question, Councilwoman.
Yes, yes, Councilman Stokes, you have the floor.
Ms. Rui, what do this, actually, what you're saying, what did this do to this particular bill? Because you said, you made some comments that was kind of concerning to me. We don't want to end up in court either, all right?
Right, Councilman, we, we can't predict when someone will sue the city. You know, we certainly have done our best to defend where we can, and, and, you know, so we don't, we don't know if anyone would sue. And because this bill is of limited duration, we have no idea what, whether, you know, a court would end up saying, you know, by the time it got to the case, that the bill was no longer on the books. So, you know, again, it's hard to predict.
Follow-up from the Law Department. My answer, from the, from the Law Department, Mr. Earn, my concern is, what is this actually going to do if it go to court? Do we still move forward on it? That's what I mean.
Erin, you, go ahead.
Yeah, yes, Chair Middleton, and thank you, Councilmembers, for the questions. I just want to add, I guess, a bit of differing legal perspective. As Ms. Rui said, you know, the, the prior cases, that, you know, have sort of been the traditional precedent, that deal with these issues were not during a pandemic, not during this unprecedented time. And the, that's part of the reason why, for, why these amendments will, I think, help the, help this law sustain any court challenge that will come up. We, the city recently had the, the moratorium of the prohibition on rent increases challenged in, in court. And part of what happened there is the, the time-limited nature of the, of the, you know, of the, of the law is part of why the court is able to sustain it, because the court's analysis is, you know, much of it is predicated on whether or not the public interest is going to outweigh what potential harm is going to, what come to a landlord, in our particular case, or whether or not the harm would be quote-unquote irreparable. Similarly, the, there's another challenge to Governor Hogan's executive orders back in May, and a court sustained that on a similar basis, that these, the changes and what we're dealing with is time-limited. So substantively, you know, there are some arguments from recent case law that are dealing with the current pandemic, and there are other cases that have dealt with the pandemic outside of Maryland that a court could look at, that would support this bill, even though under normal circumstances, it, you know, would, we have this preemption problem. But the temporary nature of it is a... But the temporary nature of it is a, a major key to that. And the other part of the, the, the time limited nature of it, as Hillary's seen, discussed, who knows when something would come up and whether or not we would be, would, would have expired by the time a court would be getting to this question.
Thank you. And I do, I do, I think I do notice HABC reps here. Nina, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. Janine Dunn from HABC is on as an attendee. If she could be elevated, she had some issues with her computer earlier. Thank you.
She's unmuted. I was told she's unmuted. She can go ahead and speak.
Good afternoon. I just got forwarded this meeting yesterday, so I'm not really familiar with the issue right now. I'm just here as an attendee to listen in on what, what was going on with the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Our, our regular representative left the agency la, his last day was last week. So I'm just kind of filling in until we get the liaison. I apologize.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey, your hand is raised. Do you have another question?
I, you know, I have another question. I just wanted to thank everybody for responding to my earlier questions and just state that I feel, I, I'm very appreciative of the intent of this ordinance. And I feel really, I'm reassured by the recent rulings that Erin DeGraffinright raised. And the fact that the law that was struck down was a half century ago. And, you know, I feel pretty good about our chances that it's pretty unlikely that somebody's going to end up taking this to court and winning. So if I might, I'd move the bill favorable as amended, Madam Chair.
Do we have any other questions or concerns from any other committee members? If not, we'll go ahead and move the bill?
Second.
Moved by Dorsey, second by Ramos. So this bill will move favorable as amended after this vote. Chair Middleton, yes? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Is it yes? Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Is it yes? Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Again, this bill moves favorable as amended unanimously. Thank you all for attending. And this will go to second reader at the next council meeting. And this hearing is adjourned, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you all.